Seven thirty, so why don't we do it? Start it? Call the meeting to order, start with the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's Board of Finance meeting is a special meeting. I think everyone in the audience knows this, we will not be discussing the police station tonight. The police station is taking a separate path. Our next, we're trying to skip the meeting schedule. We have to go through some meeting requirements, make sure everybody is available. But the next police station meeting will be next Wednesday. I believe that's the deadline then. That meeting will be a meeting of the Board of Finance where the board's selectmen will present its recommendation to the board. In addition, the building committee and the construction company will be here to discuss further the cost to completion. So again, that's a kind of riding on a separate several rails, a little different process than the budget. Tonight is the town budget.
What time do you expect that meeting to be setting?
Seven o'clock would be my guess.
Seven, okay.
Need to check with.
Did I interrupt or did I? All the back doors are locked, so if people are trying to get in, they may not be getting in. Is there a way to open that?
I'm sorry, what doors?
There's only one door open, so anyone who parks in back has to walk all the way around the building.
Well, that's, usually that's, the front building, the front door is the only one that's open, unless there's a Board of Ed meeting.
So we should tell jokes and or do hand?
There may be people coming who can't get in.
Tools out so they probably don't park in their program.
Well, why don't we start? Alright, so tonight's meeting is to recap and to move forward from the referendum of April eleven. I think there are three takeaways from that referendum and two of the takeaways require a follow-up. One takeaway is that the Board of Education budget passed one hundred and fifty-four votes, so that is now set and is no longer under consideration. The capital budget went down by a two sixty-four number and the town budget went down by sixty-six. It seems to me that the capital budget may be the easier one to get through, so I would suggest we take the agenda slightly in reverse order, talk about the capital budget first and then the town budget. Make the motion to remove the capital budget. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Did you get it, Jolene Lee?
I did.
So maybe just to begin the discussion on the capital budget, again, we had two hundred, two thousand eight hundred and fifty-six votes and went down by two sixty-four. It initially included five items, the turf field for nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, a highway truck for one ninety-six, excuse me, yes, one ninety-six, a highway street sweeper for two thirty, high school HVAC system for three fifty, and the metal, excuse me, fire department engine number six for six hundred and sixty thousand. All those numbers were numbers not too expensive. So maybe we can just start by going down the table and seeing what folks think about the capital, the capital budget. Is he, you might start?
Sure. Personally, I thought it was a good capital budget. We had things in it that we needed, but obviously the voters didn't agree and I think we have to be responsive to that. So I think we need to take something else.
Any particular items, item?
Personally, I see all those items as important. So let somebody else make a motion to eliminate something.
Cynthia?
Oh, well, I think that we have to admit that it's probably the turf field that, along with maybe another thing that made it go down. I mean, it just seemed like that. I personally, for this and the other, the town budget, I think we should go back to the selectmen's original budget.
And Cynthia, I'm sorry, do you recall what that was in the capital budget?
Well, I think the HVAC for the school was four fifty. I think the turf was not in there and everything else was in there and, you know, there's, we're out on the town budget yet, so.
And I'm sorry, everyone else is probably following, I'm just, you're just looking along again. So your suggestion is removal of the turf field?
I think we have to.
And are you suggesting moving the high school HVAC back to the four fifty or keeping it at?
I mean, I'm not suggesting that. I, I'm not, I'm just saying, you asked what it was before and that's what the salt bill had before, they took a hundred thousand. We do.
So your suggestion is that's the turf field?
Only because I think that is what? Okay. Hello?
Mr. Chairman? I've gone from memory, and we're looking it up, those original items, to Ms. McCorkin Neal's comment. I think it was a fire truck at six sixty, the high school HVAC at three fifty, the street sweeper at two thirty.
Right, that's what we have, your wife, when she said three fifty, I remember we took a hundred out of the HVAC.
Oh, okay.
Bob said three fifty, I.
You're right, it was two fifty.
Yeah.
Two fifty. And the, the truck was one ninety-six, the highway truck.
I guess we're looking at highway. I know last year, we did a truck, I believe, am I correct? We did replace a.
Plow truck.
Yeah. Wasn't this a plow truck for a hundred and ninety-one thousand?
No.
Well, last year was a lot less. It was around a hundred and eighty, maybe more.
Yeah, one seventy-nine, one eighty-five.
I just, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, purchase two large pieces of equipment, maybe it makes sense to do one, pick an either or, to lower the capital budget. If we have money towards the end of the year left in capital amount of recurring or something along those lines, we could always make that purchase later. It would be a suggestion, food for thought, maybe take the street sweeper out, maybe the trucks more, and you know, either or.
Just relative to that, responsive to that, my understanding from Bob Dibble is that he'd prefer the street sweeper to the plow truck.
Yes.
And maybe that's something we would have funding. Do you want to make a clear picture of where the budget is throughout the year, whatnot, towards the end of the plow truck? The plow truck, if he's saying the street sweeper is more imperative, maybe?
Hey Brian, just an update. The plow truck was approved in seventeen, sixteen, seventeen, but it was, it came in in eighteen.
Yeah, so we didn't, we didn't.
It was after last year.
Didn't we do a supplement pool though? Didn't one of them have an accident and we had to make a specific?
That was a, that was a small one.
That was a small one. If I may comment, Mr. Chairman? The goal of the highway department was, we still have a fleet of nineteen ninety-four class eight trucks and the goal that the department was trying to achieve was to replace one per year because they are probably all pretty much past their useful life, they're just being nursed along. The street sweeper, and I, and I know Brian just supported that, I just want to dispel a couple of pieces of misinformation that I've heard, I just have this on the record. Street sweeper is used approximately from mid-February till the end of the season, which usually ends sometime in September, October. Multiple passes are made throughout the town, it's used on every day that's not raining, you know, it is weather dependent. We need to use the sweeper to comply with state and federal environmental protection rules. And in fact, those rules, it's under what's called the MS four stormwater permit, are getting tougher. And in addition to the sweeper that we own, we also rent one from Holly Construction. So the street sweeper will be used to clean up sand repeatedly because sand washes down with every heavy rain in the spring. So it'll go from, as soon as the weather is dry enough, usually around the mid to end of February, all the way through to about the middle of July, and then it will be used to clean roads in advance of road construction, which is important. So I want, there was some misinformation in the community that it's something that's used a couple of weeks and then it sits in the garage, and that's not true. In fact, without it, we would be out of compliance with environmental regulations. So I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
Do you know what the cost to maintain that?
Quite a bit more. In fact, the, there's only one in the area that I'm aware of, and that is with Holly Construction. They actually wanted to retire their old sweeper because it's not really a profitable business for them, last year, last year or the year before, and I think Bob Dibble talked them out of it. So I'm not even a hundred percent sure it's going to be available this year. It's used to fill in oftentimes when our aging sweeper is broken down and it's in the shop. They get, they get a lot of wear and tear. But to your question, no, I can get back to you on that, but I don't know offhand what the, what the cost is. I do know that leasing them, if you leased one for seven years, you would have, you would have been able to buy one and use it for a lot of years longer. It's, it's a very high lease payment because it has no value when it comes back at the end of the lease. So it's a one-time, you know, once every ten years or so, we'll buy one of these things, but it's one of those things that's cheaper in the long run, more expensive in the short run, the year you have to buy it.
I don't know how they will sell us their old ones. Like, I mean, if they don't have to use it anymore, they will have to.
Well, it's, like I said, they're in the shop most of the, ours is.
Oh, I thought it was a trade-in.
Thirty-three six.
If we purchased the new sweeper and we have the old sweeper that's been repaired, are we going to be able to cut the rental out of the operating budget of highway and get a savings there?
It's possible. Yeah.
We don't know what that is, how much it is.
I mean, I saw, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, the rental? Thirty-three thousand six hundred.
So it's possible if we approve it, to maybe, you know, safely when we get to the town side, possibly cut twenty-five thousand out just in case they need it for, you know. How quick is it to get the street sweeper?
I, I don't know. I, I don't, I don't know the turnaround time.
I'd be a little bit, just based on what Bob Dibble told us, I'd be a little bit hesitant to bank that extra loan, because I thought he told us that it literally is on its last, like he's having a harder time getting replacement parts. It may seem to be just a source of replacement parts.
Bob, is that thirty-three thousand a month or for?
For the whole year.
We rent a sweeper for the whole year for thirty-three thousand?
They only rent it for one month.
They'll do as much up to that amount of money, sweeping.
So, yeah, I'm sorry.
They'll sweep to the extent of thirty-three thousand six hundred dollars. So Bobby watches, you know, how many different roads he's, they're going to use the sweeper on, and they have a charge, but he puts in a budget thirty-three thousand six hundred dollars for the sweeping.
So they do the service, it's not our guys who run the machine?
We have her own.
They run it, right.
We have her own, but they, they run that one, yeah.
Yeah, they, they provide the driver, right?
Mm-hmm. And we got the water truck.
In ten months, they do it for thirty-three thousand?
Well, it's not, it's not being used all the time.
Like a rental fee.
He doesn't.
I understand, I'm just saying that, I mean, I was just told that we use the street sweeper, the rental quite a bit, just seems like that's a pretty good number for a driver or water truck using the street sweeper.
No, no, I might not have been clear. We, we use our sweeper a lot, almost constantly. The, the other one is used to fill in, in the schedule, and go, be put out on the road when ours is in the shop again.
So the thirty-three thousand is only the time that ours is down and we need?
Well, they could be using it in conjunction with ours too.
Okay, that's what I tried to understand.
Yeah, yeah.
So it could be, we're running two sweepers?
On a particular day, yeah.
But we have no idea how many hours that takes.
Bobby's, you know, takes care of all that.
Brian, on the last?
Robert? I think that the, some of us on the board were caught up with the intense enthusiasm of the turf field supporters, and hence, we modified our capital program to include that, based on what we perceived as the voice of the community. And I think that the voice of the community was actually more reflective in the referendum, which although close, certainly didn't show the overwhelming support that was anticipated. And therefore, in terms of the items in the capital improvement, I think it would be prudent ours to look at that nine seventy-nine that we've allocated to the turf field, perhaps remove that at this point, allow that item to recur either on its own through an independent referendum or at another time, but continue with the truck sweeper HVAC engine.
Wendy?
I would agree with Robert. I would not like to see us not fund a highway department vehicle. I'd like the sweeper and the truck because I don't want us to get caught up in that, always having to get caught up. I don't want to get behind with that. I think it's a shame, I would have loved to have seen the turf field pass. I think that that would have been a nice enhancement to the town, but be that as it may, I think that if we take that out of the field and fund everything else, then hopefully we're good to go.
I would summarize the input to say that we've got at least three of the five, if not four, suggesting the turf field should be removed. Is there any different thinking on the turf field? Now hearing any that suggests we take that out? So move?
The second?
So all in favor of removing the turf field from the capital budget? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I make the motion to remove the highway truck for one hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars.
Second?
It's one ninety-six.
Yeah.
Second?
Discussion?
Brian, what would the, what would the reason be for that?
I personally, and this is my personal opinion and I shared it when we did the budget the last time, that it's going to get harder to pass these budgets now. This budget's going to be harder to pass than the last budget. The history shows that once a budget goes down, it's much easier to feed a second time. And, you know, the turf field, I don't know if that's the only reason the capital budget went down. I'm just being honest with you, if the turf field wasn't in there, it could have gone down. I mean, the town budget went down, so when you look at the turf supporters that were saying that it was two hundred something people, look at the difference. You still have two hundred people, at least sixty of the turf field people voted no on the town budget, right? You could assume that. So all I'm saying is, I'm not going to say that the turf field was the only reason why the capital budget went down. I think that, I said my point before, the turf field was ever added in, that I felt that the budget was too high, and now we really need to be careful because these things have a habit of snowballing. And I think the people were pretty clear on the capital budget that they wanted to see some cuts. And I do believe the highway department is going to be able to maintain the level of service if we don't replace the truck this year and keep it in mind next year, and replace the truck next year. And we're basically doing what Bob said. Bob said either or, you know, I take the street sweeper, and if we have to repair a truck, it's a lot cheaper. So that's my reasoning for saying let's remove highway trucks from the capital.
Brian Edgar, that's you being responsive?
I was responding, yes.
Do you have more?
So, so here's my question, not being a highway person, maybe not having a habit of this in here, what's the impact to the town of not getting that truck? That would be my, like, this customer's, right? Like, I, I agree with you about the budget going down, we need to try and make sure it goes, it passes this time. But what does that do to our town? That's my question.
I don't want to speak for highway as an expert, but I think most people know I have the fair amount of time in construction and self-plowing and working around equipment like this. If I really thought it was that detrimental and it was going to stop highway operations, obviously I wouldn't do it. But if a truck went down, there's private contractors who are willing to fill in, you know, you see them in the state all the time, they bring out their triaxles. And to be honest with you, you know, I think a lot of the plowing now is done with the low boys just because a lot of our roads are small, they're not, you know, roads like mine, other roads, you know, it's tough for them to drive that big truck up those roads. So I wouldn't do it if I thought I was hurting highway department. I have a lot of respect for what those guys do, they keep our roads nice and clean, but I just really think that we need to cut more than just the turf field. That's my first opinion on it. I could be wrong, I could be right.
So, right, so is there anybody here who can speak, you know, to the actual highway fleet to understand what the actual costs would be or no?
How do, how long does it usually take when we fund a big vehicle like that? We don't get it, we don't.
It, it takes up to a year to get it because they're, they're built for the road conditions and hills, so that they have the right gearing. The gearboxes are built customized, customized, so that they're right for us. Like, we would, we would not buy the same kind of a plow that the state of Connecticut uses on the expressways because those are flat. They have a different set of, they have different engine, different gearbox. So the only thing I can say is that make, you know, the, the older part of the fleet, we, we do, we do have two new ones that have been purchased two years ago, but the rest of them, I think, five or six, maybe seven, I'm not quite sure how many are left, they're twenty-four years old, and the maintenance costs, if you remember the presentation, the maintenance costs are going up. So it's, you know, it's a six of one, half dozen of the other. You're, you're, we're going to incur more maintenance costs to keep it on the road versus going ahead and ordering it now. You, you probably wouldn't actually see the expense until late in the year. So for, for what it's worth, but of course, it's Ford's decision.
Personally, I'm reluctant to do that, and maybe I'm right, maybe Brian's wrong. Who knows? We don't know what the next capital thing will be. But I think we have a responsibility to put forth a budget that covers as many of our needs as we can. I'm hesitant to remove it.
Well, I mean, we do, we do kind of know what our next capital's going to be because we're going to talk about it on Wednesday.
Yeah, but that's the police station, that's entirely, just because you have police station issues.
But it's still in voters' minds.
Well, still, you still have a responsibility to the entire town, not just the police department.
I respect your opinion. I've worked for a municipality for twenty-three years. I think if we skip it this year and there's a big problem, we can fix it without an issue. But that's just my personal.
Jay, do you have any more questions?
So then, so Brian, just like playing this forward a little bit, if we do skip it this year and there is a big problem, is it back on the capital plan for next year?
I already said that. Personally, I would take it into full consideration. I think we've always been pretty true to our word. We increased the road maintenance account, we, you know, have done a lot of good things. I mean, we replaced the police cars, we, you know, I think as a board, regardless of the makeup, we've always tried to do what's best for the town. I mean, my personal feeling was that's the commonality, making sure this capital budget passes. So I would hate to have to go to a better referendum.
To Brian's point, because I seconded his motion, that I'm listening to Bob Dibble, who said if, if he had to choose, he would take the street sweeper. And I also agree with Brian because I've been through other budgets that failed several times. And my goal for the whole vote budget is to get it down to two percent. The Board of Ed passed because they were below two percent increase. So if Bob Dibble says he can live without the truck, then I'm cool with that. And I think that we, what we owe the town is to get this budget passed, because if it fails again, it's just not going to be a good situation. So I'm in favor of taking that.
I, I would like to, if we end this year with some money, I still would like to carry forth with what we were talking about, where we're setting aside some funds for the, you know, replacement of vehicles. I'd be okay with removing or not funding it, the truck with this budget cycle, as long as we do not forget about the highway department and that kind of stuff.
So bringing up that?
I think we've demonstrated that at the board that we have talked about them, especially with the highway road paving account, we're up to eight hundred and fifty thousand now, and we've added to that every year to get it to the point where we don't need to take short-term bonds for resurfacing our roads. So you have my word, I might not have got it, it's just a different circumstances.
So my comment is, um, I.
I'm done. Yeah, that was it.
So my comment is, you know, first, I think this two percent theory is, is a little shaky, but regardless, I do agree that, you know, per Bob Dibble's presentation, you know, he wants the truck, I understand that he has a large fleet, he needs to be doing it, but right now, it seems like this is something that we can perhaps put off and redo on a more as-needed basis. So I'm kind of leaning towards my colleague's proposal that, that we take the, the truck out.
Wendy, I'm sorry, just anything else to add?
No, not really. I'm not thrilled with it, but I would go along with it, I would prefer to fund it, but it's not a hill I'm dying over.
Mr. Chairman, one, one last comment on that? I would support Wendy's idea that we take a look at the, you take a look at the end of the year to see if there's enough surplus to handle this. If you remember the original capital presentation, you know, when the board's electmen presented to this board, I started out by saying that the, all of the capital requests had totaled up to over ten million dollars. And the reason for that is that there's, every year, we keep pushing things down the road a little bit. So it, so next year, and I appreciate all the comments about, you know, committing to putting these things back in, but next year, there's going to be more capital items that are, that are in the ten-year schedule. So I would just like you to keep that in mind as you move forward.
Can I ask one other question? Am I allowed?
Sure.
So, so not having been here for the past, whatever, however many years you guys have been doing this, what is the typical capital budget amount that has passed? Depends on the city.
Yeah, I think around two, five. Last year was under a million dollars, but there's other years where we've added two point three, two point five, three million dollars, so.
So it's less of an amount issue, it's more of a what's-to-get issue?
I think so.
It also depends on the town budget too, how happy people are with the town budget, you know, sometimes go, go for the town budget, not go for the capital. But my understanding is the capital budget hasn't gone down in a very long time, is true?
Well, I, I mean, again, I'm not trying to speak out of turn, but what we told the voters was that we wanted to start paying things for cash. So we said we were going to start paying things for cash, we had agreed on a, I think our capital budget was one point, what was it, one point four million roughly, and then we decided to throw additional bonding and raise it to two point three million. You know, we can't tell people we want to start paying things with cash and then increasing the capital budget to two point three million. That's what I'm saying. I don't know whether it was the turf field, I don't know what it was, but I just think people looked at the fact that we said we're going to start paying for things with cash. And as a board, we raised it to two point, you know, three million. And I think people are smart. I think people look at that and say, hey, what is it? Are you paying things for cash? You're sitting, and again, the fund balance, I know, is a tricky game to play, you know what I mean? How much cash we really do have compared to what's on paper is, is a different thing, but I, I just really think that, you know, if you're serious about paying for things with cash, then a lot of these items, we shouldn't be borrowing. So, you know, we've got to start with small steps, you know, obviously we can't. You know, obviously, we can't pay for everything with cash, but I just think that it makes sense to, like I said, lower that to a level that the voters emotionally will be okay. I mean, basically, I think we have, well, one-point-nine, if you take that out. One-point-two-four. So, it's not ideal. I mean, I'd love to see it under a million, I just don't think it's doable right now.
Any further discussion on the highway plodra? If not, entertain a motion to move that from the capital budget?
I think you have a motion.
Do it, oh, all right, so I'll just vote.
Can I second you?
Actually, yes.
All right, all those in favor of removing increasing the, all right.
Aye.
So, that leaves the engine number six, the high school HVAC for the highway street sweeper, respectively, six-sixty, three-fifty, and two-thirty for a total of one million, two-hundred-and-forty.
That's, I have one million, one-hundred-and-forty.
Yeah, because the HVAC is two-fifty because the board voted two-hundred and a half.
Okay, that's a two-fifty, okay. Then one, one, one-point-one-four million. Is that what you have, Brad?
Yes, one mil, one million, one-hundred-and-forty thousand.
So, now presumably, we need to just approve that amount in total?
I think, yes. Yeah.
Entertain a motion so that the capital budget will, in total, well, it will include three items, so move it.
Can we just add one more to special point?
Yeah, I have another question.
Yes.
Part of the items that were in the capital request, we move the capital non-recurring which was filed out. If, you're saying that we're not going to reduce that amount, or we are going to reduce that amount, just remember, some of those items are going to get cut. And it might have made sense to look at those items that are in that line. I know we're not on the town budget, but before we close the capital budget out, maybe we should just kind of table this and move on to the council.
I was actually thinking of something, which is specifically, the highway garage is two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. Is that something that can be put into the long-term capital plan instead of the short-term? Instead of the capital non-recurring, can be bonded longer term? We would go to the town budget and then talk about that. I understand it as a notice, I'm just asking, like, is that something that could be put in the capital plan instead of, because it's a durable item, right, it lasts long enough?
Sure. What's the seven years?
No idea. What was the question?
It's either the short-term debt, if it's not a short-term project.
Can we move from capital non-recurring to?
To the capital.
To the capital. If it's longer, if it's a time, if it's a seven-year, longer life.
Capital item.
Bob said yes.
You can vote it, you can vote that. Yeah.
And Brian, to your point, right, we don't specify what items are in the capital. We just identify the amount, and we identified a number of projects that would, based on what the department heads would have, come about. And then we do the same now for the project.
Okay. No problem.
I, I support, I did the motion, you need a second.
I'll second. I didn't do it, that was Brian. That was for the approval, the three items. Yeah, it wasn't three items.
So, the engine number six for six-hundred-and-sixty thousand, the high school HVAC for two-fifty, and the highway street sweeper for two-thirty, total amount of one million, one-hundred-and-forty thousand. All those in favor? Some of you are saying aye.
Aye.
You ready?
So, just so I don't, we cut one-point, one million, seventy thousand, I have to cut from capital. Just so I don't, just so I don't have misinformation.
One million, one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. My hand calculation. I should not be verifying my calculations. Anything else on the town capital budget? Let's move on to the town operating budget. This budget failed by sixty-six votes. I think it makes for a more complicated discussion because you have to try to figure out what was it that caused sixty-six votes to move down. A special name light of kind of the divergence on the school budget and the capital budget. Given the sixty-six, my suggestion would be that we kind of take a modest approach to the budget. From what I heard, it seemed like the capital non-recurring and the road construction were the two accounts that were most likely. And, you know, we can go through the entire budget if we would like to do so, but again, based on what I heard back from folks, it was that capital non-recurring account and road construction. So, I'll, I'll make an initial suggestion that we work through those accounts and kind of obviously talk about any others.
Respectfully, but, I say, what I'm hearing from people, that's the logic that was used, putting the turf field in, and you can't really gauge that. I mean, I say with all due respect, people may be really used to things, but I, I really felt.
Well, you're supposed to keep the capital non-recurring as full level?
No, I want to go back to, I want to use the selectmen's decisions as a baseline. But that's, because I think it's less complicated going through the whole budget because they change a finite number of things.
The selectmen's approval budget was one-point-eight-five percent. We had added the police officer and some other things that we thought were wild.
And to that point, when we went through all the hearings and meetings about the police department, the police department of construction, we were told that no new officers would be hired, none. And so, there were two in the budget, and the selectmen took one out, I think we should take another, the other one out.
I was, I was trying to just set up our process to identify. I would just throw those to them, but look, we can take those off, but whatever we believe we should look at. So, the idea of the police officer, the road construction, and capital non-recurring. Those, those three items are something.
They come to the top of the lineup.
Maybe we can just go down the table again to see what folks believe we should spend some time on. I'm fine with a different process.
And fine with that, as long as you start.
To you, Wendy.
Well, personally, I would like to just leave everything the way it is, but I suppose we could look at the capital non-recurring that we had, you know, put some money in there for our longer-term goals. I don't necessarily agree with the police officer analogy because I don't think Chief Finch meant that they would never need new officers or additional officers just because they have a bigger building. I think that he maybe meant it, it's not directly related to having a bigger building, but I think the needs are there no matter what size building they have. So, I would take a little bit of convincing to support the reduction of a police officer or the police officer.
Robert?
So, it was a rather narrow defeat, and I think that some of the reason for that defeat was collateral damage to the turf field. So, I think that if we do make some modifications, they can be modest, but bring that budget, that the, the final number down. I think that what I heard from, from Chief Finch also was the additional two officers, and it wasn't to fill a new building because they needed to have more people, more guests to do it. It was because of additional administrative requirements, and he shared with us different requirements for documenting stops and, and things, and I think he feels that that's getting out of hand. We also had a big discussion about overtime versus full pay. And as we all know, overtime is an expensive proposition, and allowing a full-time officer on the force, I think, is a saving from paying all this overtime, which we've historically done. So, my feeling on, on the police ad is to keep that in the budget. Reconsider, though, the road construction, which, you know, God bless Bob Dibble, he, we'd love eight hundred, I'd love to give him eight hundred, but we don't have eight hundred to give him perhaps. And so, let's see if we can live with a slightly reduced road construction budget, and then, you know, look at the C N R and see what we can perhaps get back versus what we put in there. That's my feeling.
Brian? First, Bob, can you tell me with the, the reduction of the one-penny, one million dollars, how does that affect the town's operating budget at all in terms of our overall budget?
The one-point-one?
Capital. That we took out of capital.
Well, that's just an item that we would borrow the money for later on.
Greg, what's the interest savings on this year budget, what did you say?
The interest has gone up. I mean, back in October, we were borrowing at one fifteen, one nineteen, now it's closer to two percent, one-eight, oh, somewhere in that range.
So, it'd be like twenty-two thousand, somewhere around there.
Yeah. And, and, you know, just a matter of time, it's going to go up again. Our next ban is in June, but, you know, so.
My personal feelings, and I'll speak to a couple of things, and it's just because I'm like, I just like being fact, like, and not saying no one's factual, but the overtime issue really isn't going to be solved by hiring a police officer. I do support hiring a police officer, okay? But it's not going to help your overtime situation. When we went to requiring two full-time dispatchers on every shift, we created a hundred-eighty days minimum of guaranteed overtime. Okay, you have nine dispatchers, they were before two shift. Math doesn't lie, it's a minimum of a hundred-eighty days. So, again, factually, you know, if we're supporting the police officer, it's for public safety. It's really not an overtime issue because you're really not going to save money for that person. People go out on workers' comp, people do this. And like I said, the overtime really, and Bob, we discussed this, normally at the end of the year actually levels up because you have people out on injury leave where the insurance is paying, or we have someone who leaves the department and you still have the money in the line item, so it's able to come down. So, the salary, you know, my support for the police officer is pure public safety, has nothing to do with monetary decisions. Because if we're going to talk about monetary decisions, and that's the only driver, factually, I just don't think that that's a fair representation. With that being said, my personal goal, and I'm willing to discuss it with everyone, and I'm not targeting any specific account, I would like to see us cut five-hundred thousand dollars to this town budget, would be my goal. Would be a number that I would want to strive to hit, would be five-hundred thousand, would be the number in my mind, and that would still put us a little bit over where the selectmen's original budget was, and it'll be a budget that I think will pass. So, how we do it, it's up to a board, and, you know, I'm open to discussion, but that's really my goal.
That's pretty steep. What were you suggesting?
Well, I mean, I, I don't think it's that steep. I mean, you, you guys are talking about taking a hundred thousand from the road maintenance account, which would bring it down to seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. We increased snap, the capital non-recurring by five-hundred thousand, so if we reduce four-hundred thousand out of the capital. No, what was it, what was five-hundred? You guys have it up.
The highway was at seven.
Eight-hundred.
Yeah, then we put it back up to eight-hundred.
Okay, so, so, so. So, all right, and again, whether we cut fifty and find another fifty someplace else, if we take four-hundred out of the non-recurring account, we've still added a hundred thousand to it, and we're taking small steps to being where we want to be. Change is tough. People need to see the change, they need to see the purpose behind the change. I really feel that voters were kind of resistant to it happening all at once. And again, I know the fund balance is such a tricky situation, but they're looking at, you know, they hear a twenty-one million dollar fund balance, and now you're going to tax me extra to start paying for cash and things. Use the cash you have right now and start doing smaller increases to get to our long-term goal. Because I do agree with you, Bob, that, yeah, it makes sense to start paying for things cash, I just think we can be as aggressive. So, that's my thoughts on it.
I would consider supporting that if we took the highway department, was it the roof? And put that into the capital plan.
Sorry, quite a border. Are we going around?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And then we can talk, how we have.
Brian?
I guess with the highway garage, I agree it should be done. I would look at the possibility of using the fund balance for any of the really important items that might get a lot of better production to the capital non-recurring. Because again, I don't want to, you know, kind of talk out both sides of mouths, like we're serious about paying for cash and, oh, by the way, we're still sitting on a twenty-one million dollar fund balance and we're going to throw this over the capital. I do agree with you, it needs to get done, I just think it might make more sense to, if we have the money and Bob says it's prudent just to pay for it, without using credit cards and all that stuff.
I'd like to address that point, the fund balance point, because I think it's tricky. I, I think there's lots of misunderstanding because of the question. The fact of the fund balance is that we don't have twenty-one million dollars of cash that is unassigned, okay? We have ten-point-five million dollars of short-term debt. So, if you think about the fund balance as being twenty million dollars, then there's only nine-point-five when we take out the short-term debt. The rating agencies require us to have fifteen, maybe twenty percent.
Eighteen to twenty.
We, there's been some recent publications from rating agencies that they may ask for as much as twenty percent of fund balances for Connecticut municipalities to maintain the triple-A rating. This is a time where we really do want to keep our triple-A rating because we're facing into police station bonding and presumably, school bonding. So, critical to maintaining that triple-A rating. We, I, I just think it's important for the Board of Finance to communicate to everyone that there's not that cash balance in the fund balance. In fact, we may have not enough to meet all of our requirements. So, when, when we think about how to pay for things, I, I would just suggest that the Board of Finance, as the financial advisor of the town, make sure that we are always communicating, kind of over-communicating, that the fund balance isn't like a savings account that a, a family would use to meet obligations.
We thought we had between three and three and a half million that could be possibly used to pay down that short-term debt. But now, if the credit, if the rating agencies change requirements to twenty percent, it puts us in a severe disadvantage because now we're looking at maybe five-hundred thousand to a million if we're letting allow for those numbers made out.
We, we had a discussion recently with Barrett Benavie, he's been to the meetings, the financial advisor, and, and we kind of presented this plan to him, and his eyes opened up. It's, it's a situation where, his analogy was, it's a boxing match, all right? And you've got the big boys like Greenwich and Westport, they're the heavyweights, and we're a lightweight. And with all the pressure and the strain that's going on in the state of Connecticut, the rating agencies are looking at all the towns in a different light. And if we were to start to pull that type of money out, they may look at us in a different vein and maybe drop triple-A down to double-A plus. We're going to talk to them and see if we can't present the idea to them as a one-off, that this is what we're looking to do.
Well, what's the long-term debt at right now? What's the interest rate on our long-term?
Well, they vary on the different notes. Well, they vary on the different notes, but right now, it's running a little less than three percent. And the difference between the short and the long is getting really close. Couple of years ago, you were at eleven basis points.
But is it only determined on your short-term debt, the number, the unassigned that Bob's talking about? Is it only assigned on our short-term debt? Do they look at the long-term debt too?
Oh, yeah.
They're sending out the annual expenses.
So possibly, though, if we ended up, and again, we'll have to talk about this another meeting, if we ended up moving that to short-term over the long-term, gives us a better financial picture?
A lot of stuff on it.
Possibly.
But again, that's something we need to discuss. All right, well, that's my only thoughts on it.
And so again, from a perspective of the Board of Finance, we should dispel anyone thinking that the fund balance is free cash that we can use to pay for things.
That's a good point.
You know, we've got ten point five million dollars of short-term debt that we gotta pay off. And that's really where any excess of the fund balance should be.
So as a point of clarification, and for anyone who might watch this video going forward, we currently have, and tell me if I'm right or wrong here, we currently have twenty million dollars in the fund. No?
As of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven, I believe the fund balance was about nineteen million.
Yeah, it's twenty-two and a half percent, but included in those numbers.
I don't mean to interrupt, but we're discussing, and Daleen and I haven't, I mean, if Brian's finished with his thoughts, and then we can discuss the whole thing.
Well, I'm just interested to, I mean, she kinda brought up a point to me that I kinda asked Bob, was how many IOUs do we have in that fund balance that's not actual cash, where it's a loan that we're getting paid back? What was that number?
I said, we'll finish the circle down the table. This is, I think, trying to be responsive to the fund balance issues. And that I think we as a board need to be very clear about communication issues.
Bob, what is our, the IOU that we have right now, like, is considered part of the fund balance? What is that total amount?
You know, because there are different utility maintenance projects that are going on, it kinda fluctuates, but I would say it's probably in the range of three, three and a half million dollars.
And that's, that's included in the nineteen million, or is that excluded?
Yeah, that's part of the campus.
Three to three and a half million. So realistically, we really have under, not that we're not gonna get paid back. Obviously, the town and the utility department's gonna pay itself back. But how does the rating agency view that in terms of overall percentages? If we have a three and a half million dollar loan floating to the public utilities, which I understand why it happens and are not questioning, how does it, I don't, am I confusing you, Matt?
No, no, I have a question for Bob, go ahead.
I'm just curious, like, so they'll look at that, and they'll say, are you really under twenty percent in your fund balance, because you have an IOU that you haven't gotten back yet?
Well, their concern is, how are you gonna deal with it? All right, and we watch the rates. The rates have changed on.
Well, no, I'm talking about the public, I'm talking about the loans that we've given.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. The rating agencies will look at that balance and say, how are you gonna accomplish reducing this debt?
Point of clarification, there's out of the three million, two million of that's gonna go over to the, to the D P H loan, right?
Yeah, I mean, we have loans that have been, will be coming in, so it's gonna reduce that debt, but it's fluctuating, that number's always fluctuating.
Okay, the point I wanna make, seeing as how this is on the record, is that we don't have three million dollars just sitting out there that's owed to the general fund from, you know, that's just like a deficit. There's millions of dollars worth of capital expenses that have been paid out of the general fund, but they're gonna be reimbursed by the loans that come through D P H. So they're gonna go from one side of the balance sheet to the other.
I just said it in an improved manner, I apologize.
Yeah, oh, no, no, no. No, at one time, there was three million dollars out there that was just out there, but that's not the case now. I just want you to know that there is.
Yeah, I wasn't, I just, for my own mind, I wanna know how do loans, or however we pay for things and we're getting the money, how does it affect our credit in terms of, because now we're really talking about, maybe we don't have a million dollars in, you know, to pay things down, so.
I think, to set this point early, this is a topic for a future network response. I think the message now is, we're conscious of the need for understanding. But let's not think of the fund balance as being the piggy bank for all these little ones.
The only thing with the highway account, I mean, as long as, like, to other people's points, as long as we remember, next year, I think we still increased it by a hundred thousand this year. Was that the number?
Two hundred, four hundred and six to eight hundred.
Yeah.
Two hundred.
So if we bring it back to seven hundred, I mean, that would be, we're still moving in the right direction where we can start getting to that point where we can really, you know, resurface our roads. That's all I got.
Cynthia.
So I just remember, it was just before we finalized the budget, that Bob said that the lending agencies are okay with making capital improvements using the fund balance, and it won't affect the rating. But now I hear you saying that maybe that's not good, or?
No, the capital is still fine, but we have to watch how much we're gonna be spending.
Right.
And I was surprised that, you know, years ago, it was ten percent. Ten percent, you were in great shape.
Right.
And then it was fifteen. Now, now all of a sudden, it's, you know, eighteen to twenty because of the state of Connecticut.
Oh, yeah, oh. Okay, so that answers that question. Honestly, the people I talked to, they don't think of it as a piggy bank. They think, they know that it's spoken for, most of it, you know? But to the point, if they are changing the rules, that's definitely to do with it. So I agree with, I'm with Brian on the non-recurring, keep putting rather than five hundred thousand in the non-capital non-recurring, one hundred thousand. And I also am fine with the road recovery coming back to seven hundred. Now, the police officer, I just wanna clarify that I never thought that Chief Finch was saying that he needed bodies to fill the space. I thought that that was part of his presentation as a, more of a selling point for the whole police department, well, we're not gonna, you know, have to hire more officers. So I was not in any way implying that he's trying to fill up all that twenty-four thousand six hundred square feet of air. So I think that if we get this budget down, like Brian said, five hundred K, that it has a chance, and that's what I'm hoping.
And this is the guidance?
Well, yeah, what I just said, I think we need to take four hundred K out of the capital non-recurring, and a hundred out of the road recovery. And, you know, even though that is five hundred, I still, you know, like to discuss the police officer. I know we did cut out of overtime the last time, and I don't, and I agree with Brian, it doesn't affect necessarily overtime, but I, you know, it would be a discussion. Also, because we have to look at the police department in a different light now that it's over budget to a very large number. So that's it.
Keith?
So can I ask for a point of clarification on the fund balance? Because my understanding, and maybe I'm not right on this, so I'd like to be corrected now before I go forward thinking more, is that we have somewhere in the range of ninety to twenty-one million dollars, right? And some portion of that has to be kept in fifteen or twenty percent to keep our bond rating, correct? So that would be either eleven point two five million if it was fifteen percent, or fifteen million if it was twenty percent. Let's go with twenty, be conservative, right? So if we've got twenty, and we take fifteen away, we've got five left over, correct? There's some contractual things that we're responsible to keep in that fund balance. And I thought that was a couple million dollars, is that true?
A little more than two, yeah, it's the O P A dollars, the investment money.
So now we're down to two million dollars potentially that could be used for something else if we didn't wanna keep any kind of cushion. Is that correct? Am I correct in my thinking? Okay, so just for folks who might be listening or kind of not have understood that before, there's not twenty million dollars. There's potentially two million dollars that could be used, but that would eliminate all of our cushion to be able to do anything discretionary with that money. Is that correct?
Assuming that twenty percent is what the rating agencies are requiring.
Right, and if it's not, we would have an extra three point seven five million potentially.
But just to your point, doesn't, don't the lending agencies want to know that you can survive an emergency? So it's not a cushion as much as it's a insurance in case something unforeseen.
It's, you know, the rating agencies are asking us for how much capital we raise as buffer for shocks. And they'll also do a lot of discussions with Bob and Brad to understand the qualitative approach of the town to us. We, yeah, this town has a very good story, that it's currently a triple A rating. That's as high as you can get. And we may debate whether, you know, it's in good condition or not. The rating agencies, S and P and Fitch, both say we're triple A. So we've got a good story, a good foundation to work on.
Daleen just kind of, so the two million makes it even more important that we're careful with our capital non-recurring in terms of not spending it all at the beginning of the year. I mean, you know, we have the police department, how we're gonna proceed with that, we're gonna clarify that on Wednesday, whether we do the whole thing and send it to bond, or take the selectman's recommendation and pay with it in cash. Who knows, we need to discuss that as a board. But, so to her point, we have a lot of big expenses coming up that we need to be very mindful of and really be careful with a lot of these accounts. Would you agree with that, Bob? In terms of this, I just, situationally, the one question, and I'll wait till Daleen's done, and if I could just have one question.
So I just wanna make clear that the narrative around we've been overtaxed, there's so much money in the general fund, is just simply not true.
To the fact that we have ten point five million dollars of debt finance purchases.
Right.
Or you can look at it that we spent too much money.
The money's spent.
I mean, if you think about it, that ten million dollars would've been in the budget, all right? And the mill rate would've been even higher.
The short-term debt, ten million dollars. Correct, so to me, for the first time getting involved in town finances, to know that we're spending two hundred thousand dollars a year on the interest on that short-term debt, we have to do something about that. So my driving need with this budget is to do what we can do to not incur more short-term debt. And how can we pay off that short-term debt in the very near future? You know, we're, you know, worried about a police officer over sixty thousand dollars, or a senior center person for fifty thousand dollars. We could have two of each if we didn't have that two hundred thousand dollars of interest to pay. So maybe I'm oversimplifying this. Cynthia thinks I am.
You know what it is, because it's a whole different thing with experience. It's apples and oranges, as far as amounts, like, I understand.
Yes, an employee who receives benefits receives more than a sixty million dollars. I understand, but the notion still holds that we're taking, you know, wheelbarrows full of money to the bank to pay for things that we have borrowed before. And I think the intention of this budget was that we should stop doing that. So I think, fine, take a hundred thousand dollars out of the road repair. I think, take some money out of capital non-recurring. But let's seriously think about what items are just not necessary on this. I mean, we had the highway department garage, okay? I don't know personally if that's absolutely necessary. But somebody should, if it's gonna fall in and ruin the equipment that's in the garage, we have to fix that, right? Codish Hill culvert, highway department truck, another truck for eighty-six point five thousand dollars. I mean, how's the fleet, do we need that one at that necessity? Water main replacements, I think that's a pretty important thing to do. We just had a water main break in front of Rockwell School, and it was for a whole day, you know, kids couldn't actually take the bus up to the entrance. Parents couldn't pick up there. Like, it's not that big of a deal, but, I mean, that was something we wanted to, to extend this, pay cash for. So, and the fire department oxygen bottles, the generator replacement of the fire tower, so that the nice gentleman who was here who goes out and trudges through the snow and the rain and everything else to flip the switch doesn't have to do that. But those are the things we said we should pay cash for. So when we take four hundred thousand dollars out of that, those are the things that are going away, and what is up to you to our town? I would rather see a police officer than increase senior center staff, personally. That's my only other thought.
What was that, you went?
I'd rather see a police officer funded than increase senior center staff. So if one is going away, I would vote for senior center, additional senior center staff, because that's making up for a time of full time.
Do you have a number here, it came up in the eye, we still have, Brian put out a goal of five hundred, which I think we've been talking about a little bit more. In your analysis, which is pretty thoughtful, do you have a number out there?
Yeah, so I think if you take a hundred thousand from the roads, and you take, you know, two twenty-five or two fifty from capital non-recurring, I think you're at like a zero increase in the mill rate, or something close to that, right?
Brad?
Brad, five hundred thousand was the number.
That's not the question that Daleen just asked.
What?
Daleen's question was three fifty, is that right? All right, well, I'll do both, just.
Daleen, just to respond to the police officer versus the senior staff, I mean, the senior staff is eight thousand dollars, police officer is sixty thousand dollars. No, 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 because she's only gone from twenty-five, twenty-five or six hours to thirty-five hours. So when you do the calculation, it's not a big increase.
The total amount for the driver and the van is almost.
Well, we still need the driver.
So is that forty-two thousand dollars for the driver?
No, the driver is thirty-two thousand, I think, in there, in the budget. For the van driver?
So the way I have, maybe I'm wrong, is the director, the addition of the director's hours and the van is forty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars.
So we already had the van.
We already got the van last year. That's what I have here, maybe I'm not on the right.
Van driver, yeah, if we look at this.
Yeah, let me pull that out.
What Daleen's saying, if we look at the sheet for the senior center, it shows a year-over-year increase in total of somewhere in fifteen.
But we added, we had it, but it wasn't in last year's budget, so it's, I think it's distorted there. Let me see.
The van driver, I believe, went from twelve thousand to thirty-two thousand, so that's twenty-five. But I think his question is, what does the major at go for?
Yeah, the van driver's thirty-two thousand, it was twenty thousand last year.
So it's twelve.
All right.
Is eight thousand?
She, the twenty-nine to forty-two, that's thirteen thousand dollars there. I think she overstated the number of hours that the assistant was working. We did this in the office the other day, it was around eight thousand dollars, the difference. It wasn't that much of a difference.
But what about medical benefits?
We've negotiated, it's not gonna have any effect on it, because we negotiated the partnership plan, the state partnership plan with a union, and it's already been finalized. And the savings that we have on that is gonna be more than the cost of the medical benefits here.
So then, Bob, if I understand that, the senior center budget can come down by some number because we have a corrective number.
That forty-two six, I think, is overstated.
By what, by that?
We'll find out.
Because that's, that means the senior center budget is overstated by the overage in that account.
The Daleen, so to answer Daleen's question first, thirty-two eighty-six. If you take out three hundred and fifty thousand, the mill rate as proposed right now would be thirty-two eighty-six.
So it's a reduction of point oh two.
Yes. To answer Brian's question, if you take out five hundred thousand, the mill rate for what we know now would be thirty-two seventy-eight, so a reduction of point one.
Now, senior center?
The Board of Selectmen had taken nine thousand out of the senior center to correct a miscalculation that the director had. So nine thousand was already taken out of it. So senior center assistant, it's line one oh five, which is assistant center directors, is the drivers, the assistants, everything, that's up right now, thirty-seven thousand. Which I think is how much of that, you said, like, thirty of it is the van driver's.
Thirty-two is the van driver.
You said it, I thought you said it went up by thirty-seven, Brad.
It's up compared to the current year budget, nineteen versus eighteen. The budget that the Board of Finance approved that failed is up thirty-seven thousand from the current year budget.
Got it?
Yes.
And that thirty-seven is for the total of the senior center?
That's just for that line one oh five.
And how much of that is attributable to the part-time going from?
Eighty-four hundred, I think. Eighty-four hundred, I think, is the number we figured out the other day.
I don't think that amount was worth arguing over. I would just leave it there. That's me.
No, I think the only reason that I even brought it up was because I, if you had to choose, I think the police officer, if it was sixty versus fifty, I would take the police officer over fifty to the senior center. If it's eight thousand dollars, then it's.
Is there anything other than the discussion that, why are you tuning it up as an indoor?
Because I think the police officer was put on the table to take that out to save money.
So you want to put the senior center staff on the list of things to consider as well?
Not for eight thousand dollars, no.
But how much, what is the dollar amount if you took that position out, that the medical would be decreased by? What is the actual dollar? I understand we had a savings, but Daleen's point.
We wouldn't take anything out in medical, because we never put anything in in medical. There was never an increase in the medical expenses.
What part of that is the driver? That's what I'm thinking about, the driver.
I understand you're saying it's a medical expense. If you add an employee, right, you're going to have that plus. If you remove the employee, you have to save. Regardless, regardless whether we put it in or we didn't, there's going to be a savings.
Correct.
We assume that. So what would be the savings on medical? That's my only question, what would be left?
But we never put anything in to begin with, so you can't take anything out at this point. We never increased the medical budget, assuming that she was going to get medical benefits. That's all I'm saying. But on a single plan, what, about fifteen thousand dollars?
Can I just speak to Daleen's point?
I agree with you that all these items are good items and the town needs them. It's just not realistic to think that we're going to erase ten point five million dollars worth of short-term debt and be able to pay for it with cash by taxing the residents. I mean, it's just, it's what's going to, and again, we'll have to discuss this as a board, most likely what's going to happen is if we want to zero that out, we're going to have to move it over to long-term debt and going forward, reduce spending and live within our means in terms of whatever we get that budget up to. It's the only way it's going to work because, and again, I, I'm not a nay and say and glue and do kind of guy, but at some point, there's a breaking point where the taxpayers are going to say, no, I can't afford that. You know, you can't keep expecting me to pay, you know, this amount of taxes. Do I think we're there yet? No. I mean, was I, you know, you know I like to watch the mill rate. I think as a board, we need to start living within the means of the growth that we have thus. And that's the key moving forward. But to your point, I agree that we need to pay cash for things. It's just not doable in this budget. It's just, it's not.
So I disagree with Brian on the.
Agree with my.
Sorry, I was just waiting. I'm just waiting. I need to know, is thirty-two thousand for the driver?
It's actually twenty-seven and three.
Right.
The original request was thirty-two thousand. When the Board of Selectmen took out the nine, the recalculation that was done was like forty-five hundred for the driver, forty-five hundred for the assistant.
My understanding from attending the Board of Select meeting was that the driver is necessary because, I mean, as to us, when we voted on the van, the van has to be on the road for forty hours a week. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So the driver is a non-negotiable. The driver has to stay.
That's correct.
So that's my understanding.
That's correct.
And to your point, Daleen, about what Brian said, is part of the reason why this budget failed is because we tried to force feed them paying cash. And it's not, you know, you can't change a culture overnight. It's not like we're credit card crazy. It's just that, that part of the reason people got spooked thinking they were going to be taxed again to pay cash. So I, I think we need to be very tempered in that approach.
So that's also, do you guys talk about?
No, I didn't.
Yes, that's right.
So I, I think we're selling short the people of Bethel, but they can't understand the idea that short-term debt, like a credit card, just making the minimum payment is not a healthy situation. You need.
They do know that.
Not everyone knows that.
You need to make more than that, and that's why retiring.
But no, I'm saying you're making a statement like we said that they didn't get it. They get it, they just didn't agree with it in this budget.
Try that, you know.
We said that when we put the five hundred in.
But I don't know that they disagreed with it in the budget. They might disagree to the extent that we felt it was necessary. So I'm not opposed to reducing that amount, but I just don't think that we need to reduce it to come up with some five hundred thousand dollar position. I don't know that that, I think that's rather arbitrary, and that's not necessarily the message that I feel the community gave us.
Well, I don't think it's fair to call it arbitrary, because I do have experience with budgets. And if you recall at the meeting, I warned you saying, the town's not going to accept this, the change is too great. So to say I'm coming up with an arbitrary number is actually insulting, okay? I'm increasing the capital nonrecurring by a hundred thousand. We're taking baby steps. People will see the benefit as we go on. It's just like the road maintenance account, which we got to where it is today. When I started on the Board of Finance and Gary's here, I think it was four hundred thousand or some pathetic number that wasn't realistic. No one is disagreeing that this is the right course to go on. What we're saying is you can't ask people to come off a reevaluation year where some people's taxes went up, some people's taxes went down, and do an increase like this. It's just, it has nothing to do with whether they agree or disagree with you. It's just not, they don't have it in them, some people don't have it in them right now for that increase. So I think we're on the right track with a hundred thousand increase in there. You know, if you want to increase it a little bit more, and you can find some other spots maybe in the budget where we can find a little bit of savings, I'm all for it. But five hundred thousand is not an arbitrary number. It's my honest opinion based on doing budgets in the past and what I think the voters will approve. I'm done, Bob.
So, so I, I take everything that you guys have said apart, and I did some analysis myself yesterday. And I looked at the increase in the mill rate, which is point one-six, right? That's what the budget that was voted on that went down, right? For a hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessed home, that person would have paid seventeen dollars extra. For an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessed home, or sorry, market value, no, this is the wrong, I'm sorry. A hundred and fifty thousand market value, the person would have paid seventeen dollars more. Eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar market value, the person would have paid ninety-five dollars more, okay? For a thirty-three point oh-four mill rate, which is point one-six addition, right? That doesn't count assessment increases. Because I know, because I know people, some people are affected positively, some people were affected negatively, right? Both, right? You and me both, right? But there were people who were affected, they're going to have to pay more taxes, but still thought this was a good budget, right? So my point is, if we can get this down to a zero mill rate increase, how could people say no to that? And to get it down to a zero mill rate increase, we have to take, what is it? Brad?
Well, three fifty makes it point oh-two less.
Three fifty.
Oh, point oh-two, less than current?
Less than the current. I think when I looked at it the other day, ten is a flat mill rate.
So, so what number do we need to take out of this operating budget to get a zero mill rate increase?
Did you just say three fifty?
Three-ten.
I think three-ten makes it flat.
Three-ten.
Yeah, three-ten is flat.
So that's kind of needing, you know, Brian in the middle, really. What did you say? Did you say percentage increase?
Four hundred, right?
Percentage increase?
Hold on, let me put it back here. Percentage, in the mill rate increase, which obviously is the.
No, the first, what does that do to the operating budget percentage wise?
The total town, or then everything, two point three. Town only three point one.
Three point one percent.
So that's.
That's, that's.
That does have that service on.
But that's dividends, because that's the total tax revenue. That's not each person's increase.
Because it matters.
How does it not matter?
Because people are people, they're not sitting on the Board of Finance, and they look at it a little bit differently. And Brian and I tried to say, you know, you say the smart people will get it, or they know. We tried that. I mean, they won't be for this, and that's just it. We're trying to give you the wisdom of our experience about budgets going down, some of them three times.
It's just a tough, I guess, for like, and again, I don't know if I have a good financial experience, I have some experience. I think, I think if people, I think if people get a two and a half percent raise, which is probably the average, two to two and a half percent raise, and they see our budget going up three point one, to them, it's just the perception of what's going on. And they're not wrong, they're not wrong in thinking that way, and you're not wrong for thinking the way you do. It's just a difference of opinion.
So do you think your taxes go up zero, right?
But they could say my taxes are going down.
When you're ready.
They're looking for the same raise I got.
Right, if you don't want things to get fixed and done, absolutely, we can charge no taxes. Perfect, all right, so that's why we have things done.
My suggestion, I think we've got, we are all very passionate, and we'll disagree about whether sixty-six is a big number or a little number. And that, I don't think are right, and so, but we will be respectful and right to each other's position. My suggestion would be that there have been four items mentioned while I was taking the note, right? The police officer, road construction, capital nonrecurring, and the senior center staff. Those are the four specific items that were identified as potential adjustments. Did I capture that correctly in my note taking?
Yep, that's, that's about all I've heard.
Okay, if I did, my follow-on recommendation would be let's just start going down that list. I'd like to maybe start with an easy one. I think we thought the senior center at eight thousand is a relatively easy number. Do we, do we feel like we need to talk about? So no one's recommending an adjustment to that. We now are down to three items. Police officer. Somebody want to make some motion to make an adjustment to the police officer account?
Three eighty. Make a motion. No, it's a help. What is it, forty-sixty?
Sixty thousand.
All right, make a motion to reduce sixty thousand. Got to do the line item.
Yeah, yeah.
One oh-six. Three sixty, one oh-six. Line three sixty, one oh-six, to reduce it by sixty thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Okay, then.
We will remove, no further discussion on police officers. Road construction.
I'll make a motion to reduce account two forty, line four oh-four, road construction by one hundred thousand dollars.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
And Mr. Chair, can I just ask you to also state the new net?
Yes, yep.
Just so we, just so we're clear on.
Sure.
So that would be seven hundred thousand, correct?
The new balance in. Department two forty, account four oh-four would now be seven hundred thousand dollars. It's an increase of one hundred euro.
And then you didn't have a budget for that department?
The budget, for the department budget.
Yeah. So now we need a motion, we need to entertain a motion for Department two forty, highway department, total number of two billion, seventy-one thousand, one hundred and thirteen. That's the existing balance, less the one hundred thousand reduction. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor, since I say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And so, Brad, I think we're done, right? We got two forty, four oh-four individually as the line item, and then the department total as well. Capital nonrecurring.
I make a motion to reduce it by four hundred thousand.
Second.
Could you please state the new net?
As of now.
Like, reduce it to, so we know the total.
I'm sorry, Brian, say one oh-three.
By four hundred.
So the motion is, Department four twenty, account three seventy, the new balance would be four hundred thousand less than what it currently is, so four hundred twenty-five thousand.
Three twenty-five.
Three twenty-five.
Okay, I was just making sure everybody was.
Which is still an increase, which is still an increase of a hundred thousand, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's my motion.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak to that motion?
Sure.
I'm going to respectfully ask this board to, if possible, keep the capital nonrecurring no lower than five hundred thousand. And if I remember the original discussion, I think even Brian supported that at that time, understanding the, understanding the needs and understanding the fact that we have to get a budget passed. However, I want to review a couple of things. Daleen covered some of them. The idea was to take things, if you remember, the original request that the Board of Selectmen had in capital was over ten million dollars. We pared it down to two point one million dollars. From that point, the difference between two point one and one point four was moved into capital nonrecurring. So I have approximately forty items on capital nonrecurring, and if we, if we, if we do not fund capital nonrecurring, these things don't get done. So the culvert repair is out. The park and rec study is out. And I want to remind people that one of the things that happened with the discussion of the turf field, that there was an eruption of protest saying, why aren't we, why aren't we doing a better job of maintaining the parks that we have? I want to cover the things that have been kicked down the road so far, I don't even remember when they first came on.
I have this call.
Excuse me, I have the floor.
I want to be respectful.
I have the floor.
This is the Board of Finance.
I am an ex-official member.
And now, please, by the charter, the boarders, by the charter, the first selectman is an official of this board.
That is correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ex-Mark Mower, thirteen thousand, field irrigation, ten thousand, paved McCower Lot, Clark, McCower Lot, one hundred and thirteen thousand, Bennett Paved Lot, seventy-two thousand, Rourke Field Paved Lot, seventy-five thousand. That's two hundred and eighty-five thousand that we didn't even consider. It just keeps getting pushed on down the road. I have a hundred thousand dollars worth of material for the Bethel Fire Department, including hoses, self-contained breathing apparatus, bottles, there's the generator. So it may be a difficult discussion to have with the voters, but if we do not try to have that discussion, we're going to go back to the days of hand-to-mouth budgets where, I remember not too many years ago, a decade ago, fifteen years ago, the budgets were tight, and then it was a constant, meeting after meeting throughout the year, of things failing and having to get emergency funding. So the principle that this board took on in, in moving things to cash, I think, is absolutely solid. So I'm going to, I'm going to request that we, don't go below five hundred thousand, because we're going into dangerous territory where things are not going to get done.
And I, if I can add to that, I do believe that the capital nonrecurring needs to be reduced. I don't think that the arbitrariness of the four hundred is, it's going to make a big difference. And I think that if we reduce it to, from by two twenty-five to five hundred, we should be able to.
That's not arbitrary, though, right?
Hold on, hold on, you've got, you've got a motion, Cynthia.
I just want to say that I know that the topic keeps coming up, is that because if there's no money and we're, you know, we're too cheap, I would submit that there are other factors involved in money that have to do with, you know, perhaps management issues or the way things, you know, are going on. Not every department is, you know, right up at the top. So, you know, you have to look at management issues. You can't just say this is a, a financial vacuum. That's all I have to say.
I would like us to move. Can I speak to that? I mean, I made the, I made the motion, he made it in fashion, we have to actually get a rebuttal to it. I mean, I think it's fair. Your mind be made, I just want to go on record by saying, Matt, I respect you. I think you do a good job, but I am going to strongly disagree with your statement. With the four hundred thousand dollar cut, we're still at almost a three percent increase in overall spending. It's not like it's bare bones, like we're not doing anything. I mean, we're still, we're, we're still moving forward with projects. I mean, three percent is quite a lot in my mind, and I think that we should do this in much smaller steps. I'm gonna respectfully request that we stick to the, to the level that I've requested.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Let us vote on the motion to reduce Department four twenty, account three seventy, not capital non-recurring, it will be down from the current seven-twenty-five to three-twenty-five. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against? Nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion for this.
I'll make a motion to fund the capital non-recurring account number four twenty, line three seventy, for a total amount of five hundred thousand, reducing it by two-hundred, two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second. Discussion.
My reasoning is, I think it's the responsible thing to do. Forget the percentages, forget everything else. We still have a responsibility to the town and to the taxpayers who complain and to the taxpayers that support. We have the responsibility to all, to make sure we take care of what we have, we fix what we have, and, um, I'm sorry, I think anything less would not be a responsible amount to fund and, uh, that's it.
I wanted to just add a comment.
Well, just a minute ago, we had turf field and capital plan, so, um, I get, I get your point about that. But to me, the responsible thing to do is reduce spending, and that's where I live. So, you know, there are several ways to, um, exemplify responsibility, and that's just my comment.
I believe that now is, it's more important than ever to pay cash for certain items. This capital non-recurring account at five hundred thousand is going to have to cover somewhere in the vicinity of eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of identified projects. Right, that's, all the ones that have already been mentioned, and in addition, the one-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-dollar highway truck that we've pushed off. So it seems to me, continuing with the process of moving us into a cash bank versus a short-term debt bank to cover all of these items, the, the five hundred centuries of the board, my mic just says. Brian, certainly it's a lot less than like a reduction of two-twenty-five, I think it's a halfway compromise, it seems like the right one. I'm fine.
So, Brian, can I, can I just ask for the three percent increase that we're talking about, right? It's a three percent increase in our spending in the taxes that we will collect, correct, from everyone?
Daleen, just one question or a comment. That's three percent just for our side. It doesn't include Board of Ed.
Right, understood.
So it comes down, down to two-point-three? I think it's two-point-three when you put everything together for the town.
It's two-point-three percent overall?
For everything, overall, yeah.
And one-point-six percent of that is contractual increases, not extra spending. So if we take two-point-three and subtract one-point-six, right, you have a point-seven percent increase in actual spending.
Well, no, I mean, you, you've contractually agreed to increase it to. That's part of the spending. And that's, that's not, and again, we have nothing to do with those contracts, so. Dan, I respect all your guys' opinions, whether you believe that or not.
No, no, I just, but.
I, I just look at things through a different.
No, I understand, Brian, but when, when, when the robocalls go out and people start to talk about the increases, it shouldn't be five percent, right? It should be at this point, I never. No, no, I'm, I think a lot of people go.
I never, they would.
No, I know. They could make them robots. But anyway. But the point is, my point is that we've got a two-point-three percent increase in spending.
That's a, that's a good.
And one-point-six percent actually includes schools contractual increases as well. Is that correct? So we actually have, you know, a, so we're talking about a point-seven percent increase in money that we will spend to do other things like fix roofs and culverts and those kinds of things. Is that fair to say?
But, but you still, you still have money in those accounts. You've increased your ability by your point, however you wanna say. You still have that money, but it's.
So I move the question.
How far can we re-vote it on?
Well, no, we moved the question, you have to argue it out. We're not gonna.
Robert just moved the question, so let's vote.
So those in favor of the revised number, and again, Department four twenty, account three seventy to be five hundred thousand dollars. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against?
Nay.
So now, to the total.
Well, you got it, yeah, four twenty as a whole, it'd be seven-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand twenty-nine dollars.
Make a motion to approve account number.
Four twenty.
Four twenty at the amount of money that Brad just mentioned.
Seven-seventy-six zero twenty-nine. Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against?
Nay.
That's it as far as items that we have identified and discussed.
What's that total, yeah, I have a mill rate.
So the total, including the town, the Board of Ed maintenance, and the debt, is twenty-nine million, five-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-two, twenty-nine, five-three-six, two-four-two, for a proposed mill rate of thirty-two-point-eight-seven, a reduction of point-oh-one from the current.
How much do we deduct from the whole budget?
Three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand.
And Brad, what's the increase in spending? Did you say two-point-three?
Two-point-three. That's town, Board of Ed, that's everything.
Across the board, yeah. I believe the only motion we have left, the left is to move this to.
Well, you need to do the, go down to twenty-nine, twenty-nine-eight?
Yes.
The total.
The twenty-nine, five-thirty-six.
Yes, two-four-two.
Is it two-forty-seven or two-forty-one, Brad?
Two-forty-two.
Two-forty-two.
All right, so a motion, entertain a motion to approve the total amount of twenty-nine, five-thirty-six, two-forty-two. So move? That was fast.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against?
Nay.
And here's.
Yeah, I don't think they need to go on, including the Board of Ed now.
No, not.
Now, just, just to clarify, what was the actual increase to the town budget? Not the whole town budget, just the town side? What was it? What's the actual number?
So without that term, the town's up three-point-six, three-point-six-six. And the town with the Board of Ed maintenance and debt service is up three-point-one.
So the Board of Ed and the town increasing expenses are basically the same. But because their denominator is so much larger, their percentage is so much smaller. So you gotta be careful when you're playing with the percentages. That's all I wanna say.
Any further discussion before we make a motion to move the recommended budget to the town meeting on Tuesday, April twenty-fourth, seven PM at the Bethel High School Auditorium? No additional discussion. entertain a motion to move the recommended budget to the town meeting December twenty, excuse me, Tuesday, April twenty-fourth, seven, one PM.
I can move or?
Second, one of them.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Nay.
We are done for today. entertain a motion to move to adjourn.
I'll second.
John's week is Friday. Friday.
No, nobody talks Friday evening.
I don't know what it's gonna take me to go online and.
Okay.